Join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Dave Frank.
Present.
Judy Anne Piles.
Present.
Doug Lasbell.
Present.
Jay David Reed.
Present.
Ed Ulliberry.
Here.
All city councilors are present.
Thank you. And are there any changes to the agenda, including additions or deletions?
I know of none.
There was one minor correction that we did put in, and it may or may not have gotten onto the printed copies, but we wanted to make sure that we're good on that. Perfect. Excellent. And the next thing is a proclamation for Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. And I understand that Jamie Hurst is here.
Yeah.
She acts like she knows what she's doing.
It's not my first time.
I've done this before.
I have.
Okay, we have a proclamation for Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, September of 2025, whereas in 2024, our region experienced 41 community member deaths by suicide, predominantly middle to late-aged white males through the CDPHE. And whereas each year approximately 13 million adults seriously think about suicide, 3.8 million make a plan for suicide, and 1.5 million adults attempt suicide. And whereas in 2024, 1,306 Coloradans died by suicide, with the majority being in the age range of 35 to 44. And whereas in 2022, Colorado had the 10th highest suicide rating of states in the United States, 1,293 people died by suicide in Colorado. And whereas our local Suicide Prevention Awareness and Recovery Coalition, SPARC, and organizations such as Tri-County Health Network are dedicated to saving lives and bringing hope to those affected by suicide through education, advocacy, and resources for those who have experienced suicidal thoughts or lost someone to suicide. Now, therefore, we, the City Council of the City of Montrose, Colorado, do hereby proclaim September 2025 as Suicide Prevention Awareness Month in the City of Montrose, and that we urge our community to recognize suicide as a preventable national and state public health problem, that there is no single cause of suicide, that anyone can experience suicidal thoughts, and the recovery from suicidal ideation is possible, acknowledge that no single suicide prevention program or effort will be appropriate for all populations or communities, and address the disparity in access to mental health care for underserved and underrepresented groups while advocating to end those disparities. Develop and implement strategies to improve and increase access to quality mental health, substance abuse, and suicide prevention services and programs, as well as support post prevention plans for community response to a death by suicide. And support the efforts of SPARC in fostering connection and spreading the message that we are the ones who talk about suicide. And witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause to be affixed the official seal of the City of Montrose the second day of September 2025.
Thank you. Sure, yeah. Maybe I'll make it shorter next year. I realize that's really long. But thank you again for another year of the City Council supporting the proclamation. As a resident of Montrose who has had suicidal thoughts, thank you. And as the coordinator for the Suicide Prevention Awareness and Recovery Coalition, thank you as well. And I did want to share with everybody that this year we're going to be having a Walk for Hope in Montrose on September 20th. So this will be a Suicide Prevention Awareness Month gathering and awareness walk that's going to be in Rotary Park on September 20th. And we're going to have some local speakers share some words of wisdom, messages of hope, how they have found hope in the community. So please feel free to come. We have free coffee trader coffee and donuts and lots of resource tables from local organizations working to create connectedness and to talk about suicide because talking about it is really the best thing we can do and something that we all can do every day in our daily lives. So, thank you.
Moving on to our next item is the Call for Public Comment for Non-Agenda Items. The Call for Public Agenda Item is a time when concerned members of the community may publicly voice their concerns and discuss items of interest. Please note that no formal action will be taken on the matters raised during this time. Comments made during this time should be addressed to the council and pertaining to matters of at least general importance to the city and its operations. Please be aware that neither city council nor city staff are expected to respond or engage in discussion or debate. Please refrain from using any personal attacks or disagreements, personnel or employment matters, the use of profanity, or ethnic, racial, or gender-oriented slurs, as they may be considered disorderly conduct which violates state or local law. We give you three minutes. I will let you know when you have 30 seconds left. And if you wouldn't mind, start lining up here at the front post for those of you who wish to make public comment, and we will go in orders of whoever stands up first. Mr. Stockton.
I'm it.
And if you would please introduce yourself and where you live for the record.
Dave Stockton. I live in the Fox Meadows subdivision off of Meadows Parkway and 6700 Road. So, good evening, Mr. Mayor and fellow councilors. I stand for you tonight to review in person the email I sent you over the Labor Day weekend. In that email, I mentioned three concerns I have with proposed changes to the city charter. My first concern is change in the language regarding term limits for city councilors. The proposed change is to allow the at-large seat to serve four consecutive terms. That's an additional two-year term. I recognize the state constitution allows voters in local jurisdictions to modify or eliminate term limits, but Article 18, Section 11 establishes the following baseline: two consecutive four-year terms, three consecutive terms if they are two years or less. There's a nationwide outcry to have more control over legislative and executive bodies through term limits. It appears you are choosing to ignore the will of the people by asking to extend the allowable number of consecutive terms to be served. My second, excuse me, my second concern was eliminating the residency requirement for the municipal judge. It is my firm belief that anyone having the authority to hold judgment over someone for alleged violations of the city code or law should be a resident of the city, if not the county, as currently required. My third concern brought to your attention was regarding the city attorney. The proposed change to the charter states the city attorney shall have the authority to hire, promote, demote, transfer, discipline, or discharge in accordance with the provisions of the municipal code, charter, and city personnel policies, any employee in the city's attorney's office. The city has an HR department to handle those duties. There's no need to change the current mode of operation. I do not see how any of these proposed changes benefit the residents of this city. At this point, I'm a no vote. Thank you.
Next.
I'm Joe Evans, 2967 Outlook Road here in beautiful Montrose. And in the lobby, I picked up this cool little sticker. I think you're familiar with it. Stay here, play everywhere. Sounds pretty good, doesn't it? But what if that play everywhere part is about to come under assault like never before? When the big beautiful bill, also known as HR 1, passed Congress, its supporters celebrated a sweeping return to energy dominance. Not a bad idea. But buried beneath the headlines is a quiet, far-reaching assault on America's public lands, one that puts the $1.2 trillion recreation economy at risk, including Montrose County, which is approximately 70% federal land. HR 1 calls for oil and gas leasing on hundreds of thousands of acres of federal land. Section 50101 removed the Bureau of Land Management's authority to defer oil and gas lease nominations. This means that if an oil company nominates land for development, even in a world-class climbing area or a nationally recognized biking trail, the BLM must put it on the auction block, no questions asked. Now removed is also the agency's responsibility to weigh recreational, cultural, or ecological values before making decisions. A particular concern is this loss of meaningful local input from gateway communities, tribes, and outdoor users, who know best about these areas because HR 1 also gets the public's ability to participate in decision-making. And affect it Muslims-Americans who care about their public lands, whether the local business owners, elected officials, indigenous leaders, recreational users, and even ranchers. The scope of what's now at risk is staggering. As I speak, federal land management agencies are rushing forward aggressively with rules to implement HR 1 that prioritize industry access over public oversight and environmental safeguards. It's not too late to fix this. To learn more about this important issue, the Black Canyon Audubon Society would like to invite you and members of the community to a presentation by Walt Dammity at the Union Indian Museum on Thursday, September 11th at 7:00 p.m. Walt is retired National Park Service Superintendent at Canyonlands National Park and also a former Texas State Park Director. Stay here, play everywhere.
30 seconds.
Maybe not so much in the future. Thank you.
My name is Annie Hauck, 60836 Logan Lane, Montrose. I'm here tonight to address the current conflict between the Montrose United Methodist Church and the City of Montrose. As we are all aware, last winter, the City of Montrose enacted an ordinance that forbade overnight camping. This led our communities unhoused neighbors to move from their accustomed spots and seek shelter elsewhere. As the weather got dangerously cold, our church found more and more unhoused people seeking shelter on our downtown property. We sought to help these neighbors, as we are commanded by Christ to do, by providing temporary shelter that included overnight camping, food, and other assistance. Over the next months, we realized that as a church, we were not equipped to operate an unhoused encampment indefinitely, and we suspended our operation at the end of May. Throughout the winter and continuing until now, we find ourselves in ongoing conflict with the city, which was certainly never our intention. Nevertheless, both the city and our church are now spending countless hours and lots of money working through the legal challenges presented, rather than working together to find solutions to the underlying problem, which is how to serve the poorest of the poor in our community. Our time and the city's time could be much more productively spent working together to find solutions. Instead, we find we must spend countless hours of salaried employee time, as well as volunteer time, to respond to charges brought against us by the city. We are required to spend time and energy raising money to pay our legal obligations, rather than spending that money participating in ministries that support our community. We respectfully request the city to drop these pending legal proceedings and instead join with us and others in the community to work toward a more long-term solution. Thank you for your time.
No, no pause, please.
Good evening, thank you. My name is Neil Platzer. I live at 2849 Lost Creek Road here in Montrose. I wanted to speak today about lessons learned and moving on to better things and greater things. Again, it's on the unhoused. After the first reading of the original ordinance last August, a group of concerned citizens started meeting at what would become Solutions for the Unhoused. After it seemed unlikely for us to stop the ordinance, we worked on possible solutions for the coming winter. One of our leaders prepared a draft agreement between an organization that might want to help the unhoused and the unhoused person themselves. This draft agreement was reviewed and edited a number of times at meetings by public defenders, therapists, first responders, some of whom worked with the police department, a city employee, concerned citizens, addiction therapists, as well as folks who had been unhoused previously. When the ordinance went into effect, the number of people seeking camping at the Methodist Quad went from three, which it had been for 15 years, up and down from that number, to 65. With the development of an agreement and the overwhelming call for a place to camp with the approach of winter and the Christmas holidays, it was decided that it was better to have a managed site than just a free-for-all. The agreement was made specific to the Methodist Church, and I personally gave copies to a first responder to share with the police department prior to any campers moving into the quad or being even interviewed. I will also tell you that we found the task to be much more complicated and difficult than we had imagined. To make it truly successful, we would have needed professional management. With the lack of these, many things didn't go as planned, although I still feel we did much good. Some of the things the city has learned is that about a third of the unhoused have dogs. They also have more possessions than will fit in a backpack. These reasons prevented many from being able to take advantage of the lighthouse, and as other cities are doing, shelters need to be managed not on a test, but on actions.
30 seconds.
The Methodist Church, looking ahead, does not have any plans for a future campsite. We're focusing on Sunday supper and working with the community. Also, the city has learned from the past and is looking how to move ahead with the winter shelter being more practical, as well as providing possible Code Blue warming. Therefore, I'm asking the members of council and the city manager to work with the community moving forward, let's drop the charges against the Methodist Church, and all work together to find better solutions. Thank you.
My name is Connie Pittenger. I live at 126 Columbia Way. At my last visit here, I let you know that I was very confused about our relationship, and I'm still very confused about the relationship between our church, the Montrose United Methodist, and you, the city government of Montrose. It would seem like we should be working together instead of against each other. We should be working for the same cause, helping those who need a hand up. It would appear that you kind of despise our church for our efforts to help people. We were supposed to have an agreement to get an open records request. We paid our $2,500. Your part of the agreement has not been fulfilled. We are making efforts to be a part of the solution. We want to be a part of the solution. I'm hoping that you also want to be a part of the solution. We need to be a unified community to assist with the unhoused. We are hoping that many other entities, churches and other organizations alike, will join with us to reach a better resolution that demonstrates dignity for all involved. And I hope that in your executive session later this evening, that your good common sense prevails in your deliberations.
Greetings. My name is James Whiting. I'm a citizen of Montrose for now three years. I live at Insemaron Creek Community at 901 6530 Road, Unit 1202, and I also attend the Methodist Church. And over the past year, I've learned an awful lot about the unhoused. My experience as a nurse practitioner and as a registered nurse, I worked with the Division of Youth Services for the State of Colorado for 10 years. I worked with the Developmentally Disabled Division for 15 years. I feel that the City of Montrose is treating the least of these citizens of Montrose with contempt, and I don't like that. I feel like we need to help them and reach out to them, and I've been given the ability now to work with Shepherd's Hand and assist some of these people, and it's been quite rewarding. I am surprised that the city has chosen to cite the Methodist Church with very petty offenses and taking it to court. I think that's kind of foolish, in my view, and I feel like the city should work with the solutions for the unhoused group and come with innovative solutions to work with this group of people who truly need our help. Thank you.
My name's Nancy Zanger. I live at 63193 Newport Drive. Last November, the city outlawed camping in the city just as the frigid weather hit, and people had no place to go. Then, Montrose Church, United Methodist Church, tried to help by providing space on their property for these people to have someplace to lay their head, and the city's response was to issue citations, money them unrelated to camping. Over the course of the winter, the church attempted to assist unhoused people, 83% of whom are Montrose natives. They are us. And the city did nothing to help and instead issued citations continuously. In the spring, the camp was vacated. The church decided, because it caused a lot of problems that are in too, it decided not to repeat allowing camping this coming winter. Yet the city persists in its effort to procure over $80,000 in citations, money that could be used to help the needy among us. I find it difficult to reason why the city continues this effort, utilizing city resources and monies to penalize a church. Is there no other work to keep the solicitor busy? Is there someone behind this effort that is exercising pressure on the city? Is the city trying to make an example of the church to assert a position of power? I see the advisable route for the city is to abandon this ugly and unkind course it has been pursuing and to attend other needs, such as finding a solution to the situation that our fellow citizens have found themselves in, because this is a city problem.
Any other public comment? Seeing none, we'll close public comment and move on to our consent agenda. And consent agenda is a number of different items that are printed on the printed agenda, and we will not read all of those, but if you will entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
Mr., excuse me, I went the wrong way for a microphone. Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion and a second. Please vote. Passes unanimously. Moving on to item number eight, Retainer for Legal Services. City Council, consideration of a retainer for legal services agreement with Bear Peak Law, P L L C, for a proposed second Montrose Urban Renewal Authority project. And it's City Manager Bill Bell and Anthony Russo, Business Development.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So, we talked about this at the work session earlier today, and we've talked about it at a few other meetings in the past. The idea is to get into a legal retainer relationship with Paul Benedetti and his firm. Paul is the, one of the leading experts in Colorado on the establishment of urban renewal authorities, and he's the one that we worked with to establish MIRA here in Montrose. MIRA's been a very successful project, so the model's working out really well. We have been in discussions with several different groups who would like to redevelop the downtown through a variety of adaptive reuse projects with our historic buildings and a lot of the costs that go into either demoing and rebuilding if they're not historic or going in and doing necessary rehabilitation of those historic buildings. And so, the idea is that currently, the URA covers the entire city. We have project area number one, being Colorado Outdoors. We're proposing we enter into this relationship just to take the next steps to see what it would take and what would be involved in creating a project area number two right in the core of our downtown, probably establishing some kind of boundaries. That would be one block in either direction of Main Street and then a certain direction, east and west from the river. That would be kind of that central corridor downtown. And so, this is really just to give us the authority to enter into that retainer. It's an hourly retainer, and that would be to spend the time putting together a scope of services, and then we would bring that back to city council at a work session to make sure we have it not to exceed amount in that scope. And that would be to put together the plan documents, to do the blight study. You have to, before you can create a project area, you have to identify the blighted nature or underutilized nature of that area, and then put in potential projects that you would do that serve a public purpose. And so, this is really just to give us the authority to take those next steps.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Bell or Mr. Russo?
Mr. Bell, just in a nutshell, this is a, we're authorizing the engagement of these attorneys to assist in the, quote, feasibility study as opposed to any action item.
Correct. This would be to identify, does it make sense to do the project? If so, here's how we would do the project, and using their expertise to give us recommendations on how to do that. I know they've already had some good discussions with Anthony, talking about some of those things, but until we have a formal relationship with them, they're leery to bring that into the public, public eye, of course. Anything I missed, Anthony?
No, I think that covers everything. You know, the goal, the goal here would be to really take those next steps, and it'll take some time to develop over the next, say, six months. So, this will be an ongoing process.
There's no other questions?
No, I just wanted to note that I did address my concerns at the work session concerning having more projects going. And so, I thought, well, my understanding is we're just going to look at it. We're not actually going to set up another directive or whatever. This is just to look at it, see the possibilities, and not spread ourselves thin, so to speak. Okay, thank you.
No other council comments? I will open up for public comment. And seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the retainer for legal service agreement with Bear Peak Law, P L L C, as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second. Please vote. And that passes unanimously. Moving on to our next item, number nine, Bear Creek Final Platt Filing 9B. City Council, consideration of Bear Creek Final Platt Filing 9B. And before we start with that, Mr. Reed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am going to recuse myself from discussion and consideration of this item and excuse myself from the dice.
Thank you. Give you a moment to get out of the room. And to address this next item is Senior Planner William Reese.
Thank you and good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of city council, and members of the public. The Bear Creek subdivision final plat filing number 9B is located on a 31.92 acre site within the Bear Creek subdivision, and that is southwest of the intersection of 6530 Road and Lincoln Road. The site is partially zoned R3A medium-high-density district and partially zoned R5 low-density slash manufactured housing district. The proposed final plat would formally subdivide 23 residential lots, as well as dedicate associated rights of way and easements. This is within the Bear Creek subdivision amendment four preliminary plat, which This is within the Bear Creek Subdivision Amendment 4 preliminary plat, which was approved by the City Council on September 7th, 2021. And then this is also within the Bear Creek PD Plan Amendment 3, which does permit zero-foot side setback in certain instances, which does allow for townhome construction. And that document was recorded on December 1st, 2004. All lots must meet the minimum lot size as permitted in that PD plan, and all surrounding streets must be in place and approved by the city engineer, as well as utilities that must be installed before final execution. This is the first page of the final plat itself, mostly consisting of the plat notes and the certificates, as well as a small insert illustrating some of the setback deviations that were permitted as part of that PD from 2004. The second page shows the plat itself. As mentioned, there are 23 proposed residential lots. Now, given the zoning and the PD, some of the lots shown, shown in blocks 10 and 11 on this plat can't have duplexes or townhomes, though not necessarily required, and the other lots would be single-family residential. The remaining 24.5 acres is shown as an outlaw, which is reserved for future development. Staff does find that the final plat proposal is in compliance with the subdivision regulations and the comprehensive plan, as well as the Bear Creek PD Plan Amendment 3. Staff recommends the conditional approval of the Bear Creek Subdivision Final Platt Filing Number 9B with the standard condition that we recommend for all plats, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions for Mr. Reese? Seeing none, would accept public comment on this item? And seeing none, would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept, to approve the Bear Creek Final Platt Filing 9B expressly conditioned upon the city staff, ensuring that all policies, regulations, ordinances, and municipal code provisions are met, and that the applicant adequately addressed all of staff's concerns prior to execution of the final plat. The city, the city staff is not authorized by this approval to execute the final plat prior to all conditions being met.
Second. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Please vote. Very enthusiastic. Second, just wanted to. And that passes four yeses and one abstention from Mr. Reed. Thank you. Moving on. If someone could fetch Mr. Reed, please. Yeah, since we actually have finished with all of our action items, we'll go ahead and start on staff reports while they're getting him back in the room. So, any staff reports?
Give a quick project update, since I didn't make the work session today. The old Nintendo trick. There it is. Okay. Couple, yeah, so some dates are coming into focus on all of the big products going on, so I just want to show those so everyone's aware. This is going out on Facebook, and I'll copy you guys on that as well, just so you have it, in case you get asked about it. But on West Main, the last major piece of work is removing the old striping, so they can put down a chip seal and put on the new. That is scheduled for, the chip seal is scheduled for, the striping removal is ongoing, the chip seal is scheduled for September 11th. It should probably take a day, maybe two. They have to wait a week for that to cure before they can put on the fog seal, which is kind of the black coating. They have to give that a couple days to cure, then they can put on the striping. So with all of that, it should pretty cleanly be finished up by the end of September. That one will be done. On East Main, they'll be working on concrete along the side streets, or along the shoulder areas, in preparation of the mill and overlay, which is the last major piece. The mill is scheduled to start, see, September 29th, which is a Monday, so it's right after the homecoming parade, so we'll avoid that overlap. That'll take about a week. In order to avoid having milling and paving going on at the same time and closing all parking on Main Street, they're going to do all of the mill first, so that'll take place during the day, the first week. And most likely, with temperatures, the paving will be taking place during the day as well. We'll get more detailed, kind of block-by-block schedules as that comes into focus, but that'll start the following week of October 6th, which puts us in a, plenty of still good daytime temperatures for the paving through that reach. That one, we can go straight into striping right behind that, so as the paving progresses, striping will start right behind them and should clean up pretty quickly right behind that. So mid-October, third week of October, that project should be wrapping up with a brand-new Main Street. And then the last piece is the Woodgate Oak Grove Roundabout. We do have an opening date set, and everything's looking great. Should be able to hit that, no problem, of September 19th. So they're doing the final concrete pours, and they'll go into asphalt paving here in a week or so, and then that'll be open the 19th. So there'll be a little bit of shoulder work going on after that, but no more closures after we reopen it. So those are the big ones. Then all of our closures on Rio Grande alongside the shop, now that the natural gas is all put in, those are all done. You might see some night work going on there for D M E A setting a new pole, and some flagger work as they dig, get all the lines connected to that new pole, but for the most part, all the major closures are done over there. So it's wrapping up. We're getting there. Any questions on projects?
Very excited here. Any questions?
Good job.
Any other staff reports? And seeing none, we'll move into our City Council comments. Any City Council comments this evening?
We had a great groundbreaking dirt-throwing, whatever you want to call it, at Public Works today. Long awaited. It was fun to go down there and do it. You all know, because you've driven by, all that work has already been happening on the new site for Public Works, but today was the official groundbreaking, and it's just so exciting to see that it's going. Thanks, Jim. Thanks, Scott.
Very exciting news. Moving on to our final item is for an executive session for conference with the city attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice pursuant to CRS Section 24-6-402, Print 4, Print B. The following additional details are provided for identification purposes. Litigation update.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to enter into executive session for a conference with the city attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice pursuant to CRS Section 24-6-402, 4B, and the following additional details are provided for identification purposes. Litigation update.
Second. I'll second. Motion and a second? Please vote.
I closed off my computer.
Since you made the motion, we're going to assume you vote yes.
I vote yes.
Just. Yes.
Did you shut your computer down also?
Yeah, it just went.
All right, that passes unanimously. In order to continue with the executive session, we will clear the room. Thank you for attending tonight.